The states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please have a seat. Remember to silence phones, pagers, other electronic devices. Item one, citizen concerns. Do we have anybody that wishes to address anything that is not already on the agenda? Item two, approval of the agenda. I will move it.
Take it.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Pass is five to zero. Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number three, approval of the minutes of the May 11th meeting. Four, approval of claims. Five, county auditor A received the Woodbury Central Community School District's appointment of Jerry Cross, I'm sorry Jeremy Cross. Five B, approval of a one-year cigarette tobacco sales permit, application for Heritage Express in Sloan, Iowa. Six, Board of Supervisors approve appointment of Benjamin Yule to the Judicial Magistrate Nomination Commission. B, approval of resolution to appoint Patrick Gill as representatives of the Northwest Regional Housing Authority. Do we have any questions or concerns about the consent agenda or any item? Hearing none, I will move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Pass is five to zero. Item seven is approval of proclamation for Mental Health Month. Does anybody feel that the proclamation should be read?
Well, if it's proclamation, does it have to be read?
It's an annual thing. Woodbury County, Iowa proclamation, Mental Health Month 2021. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas Mental Health America reports that 9.7% of youth have severe major depression, this rate was highest among youth who identify as more than one race at 12.4%. Even before COVID-19, the prevalence of mental health illness among adults was increasing, an increase of 1.5 million people over last year's data. In addition, Mental Health America, from January 2020 to September of 2020, there was a reported 93% increase in anxiety screenings and 62% increase in depression screenings. And whereas education is an effective way to reduce the stigma of mental health illnesses, and whereas mental health illnesses are real and prevalent in our county regardless of socioeconomic boundaries, and whereas we encourage our citizens to get help for mental health illnesses and to understand it as an important way to treat, important to treat as any other illness such as diabetes or heart disease, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health illnesses and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas through increased awareness, we can achieve our goal to abandon negative stigmatism and reinforce our acceptance of individuals seeking treatment. Then therefore, I, Rocky DeWitt, Chairman, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month in Woodbury County, Iowa. As Chairman, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institution, businesses and schools of Woodbury County, Iowa to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible surfaces for all people with mental illnesses at all stated stages, dated the 18th day of May 2021.
I move to approve the proclamation.
A second.
Motion by Monson, second by Radig. Any comments before the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Pass is five to zero. Item eight, secondary roads. Receive quotes for a single axle dump truck and return them to the county for an award recommendation.
We have bid tabs there so everybody can keep track as we go through. Interesting seeing this in a box.
Maybe it's like a die-cast version of the truck.
I think we've got to rethink allowing the county engineer to bring a small pocket knife back in.
Say we got these up here still.
We'll leave that to the sheriff. I don't know if we can make that call.
He's got one.
I got it. All right. First one is from Reece Truck and Trailer of Fort Dodge, Iowa.
Are we trading one in?
Yes, we're trading in unit 207, which is a Sterling Actera. I've just got to find what their price is. It's a 2004. It's the oldest of our current single axle trucks. Our bid sheet got truncated and nobody called for clarification, so right now I just need They're proposing a Mack truck. to find where they put it in their bid. Total bid price for truck and equipment, less trade, $182,825.95.
After trade-in.
Surely they gave me a summary sheet somewhere. What's that? That was net price. Should probably have the theme music from Jeopardy or something playing while you're... Yeah, we need something to keep you all entertained while we're doing this. Next is from I State.
I'd say I could probably find the Jeopardy theme song, but I'd get an ad first, so...
Okay, for the truck equipment, they're quoting $67,092. That would be for the body, the plow, the spreader.
$67,092?
Correct. 67092. We didn't get a single question about why we didn't have that net price line on the I saw a price on the truck of... $94,396. So I assume it's going to be the sum of those two less $10,000.
Which is 151,488.
Thank you. Less $10,000, so that would put it on 141.
No, I took the 10 off already.
Okay. Oh, you took the 10 off already at 151?
Yep.
The second bid is for a Western Star truck. This is also from I State. They bid a Freightliner on the first bid and a Western Star on the second. They're a dealer for both types of trucks. The Western Star is $98,823.
But the same 67 and...
67092 because they only have the bid in here from Stephen for assembly, so...
So that makes the grand total 155,915.
And the trade value again is 10,000. So 155.
915.
Thank you.
That it?
No. We have more. I'm just trying to find a place to set things so that they don't all go to one floor. It would really be nice to either have a shelf down here or a table over here where we can do this. Let's not ask it too much, Mr. Chairman. It's not in the budget.
But I don't think we can use COVID money for that.
There's a table over there I could steal.
Toss him up here like a frisbee, I'll catch him in my mouth.
I'd actually give you a dollar if you thought it.
You don't carry a dollar with you.
I actually, well, no, I don't.
Okay. Next one we have is from Cornhusker International. They're offering us 5,500 on the trade, so their new truck sale price is 155,236.44. Less $5,500 for trade, net bid 149,736.44.
What kind of vehicle was that again?
That was for an International 4700, I believe. Their new truck and equipment is 164,000, $4,800 for the Sterling trade. 159,2. What did you say the truck was? 164? 164, 4,800 for the trade. I think that's 159,2. Final bid is from Boyer Trucks of Sioux Falls. Do I hear 140? 166,463 for truck plus equipment, 11,750 for the trade. 166,463 for the truck and equipment, again, 1170 in trade.
So that's 154,713.
Recommend the board receive the bids and return them to the county engineer for review.
Move it.
Second. Motion by Monson, second by Radig to receive the bids. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Pass is five to zero.
Do you factor in brand preference when you come to make a recommendation, or...
Maybe.
Maybe.
Item B, receive quotes for a wheel loader and return to the county engineer for award recommendation.
To fully answer Keith's question, we've bought five Western Stars in the last seven years. They've all been really good trucks. The guys like them. Cab and just the interior quality units of the truck chassis in our price range, it's typically one of the best trucks out there, I think.
Well, you got four that are within 5,000 of each other, so...
Yeah, I'll have to look at it and where it fills, fixes in with the total budget for next fiscal year. The Western Star would definitely be our staff's preference. I'm sure our guys would love a Peterbilt, too, but that one might have been a little bit cost prohibitive. It's nice to see them coming and throwing us a price at least.
I don't know, 159 is not that far. I mean, it's 10 off from the lowest, so...
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a, it's not a terrible price. You know, this is all assuming that everything is equal on engine, transmission, and the rest of the componentry. We all know they're using the same bodybuilder. They all went to Stephen this year, so Stephen must have been low. I know they checked with the one in Fort Dodge as well, and Falls, those are the nearest bodybuilders, and they usually throw us the low one. Stephen's is really the one that does most of our work. I'm sorry.
Let's just skip.
Okay, first one up is Mid Country Machinery on the loader. And they turned in a no bid. Guess is that their loader didn't meet our spec. Last year they were thrown out. They were third low, they were thrown out because they didn't meet the horsepower rating of the loader. Next is Writers dot, Writers out of Sioux City here. We're trading in John Deere loader on this one. Total price, 200,400. Trade-in on the John Deere loader, 25,000. Price of the loader, 269,900. Trade-in on 527, 25,000. Net price, 244,900. That's on a Case 921G as in George.
And the first one was on a Hyundai, right?
Yes. Total bid price, 266,450. Trade-in, 34,000. That was on a John Deere? Yes, that's on a John Deere 644P as in Paul. Total bid price, 248,500. Trade-in on the John Deere, 28,000. This is for a Volvo L110H. Trade-in on the John Deere, 21,000. Net price, 210,983. Final bid is from Rose Machinery Company. Trade-in on the John Deere, 28,880. Recommend the board receive the bids and return them to the county engineer.
Move to receive.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Pass is five to zero. Item C, receive quotes for two new motor graders.
There's two bid tabs on the motor graders. The first one is for a six-by-four, so without an all-wheel-drive motor grader. That one would be assigned to our lawton territory. In evaluating our needs for that particular motor grader, we felt that the six-by-four with the joystick controls was a better choice. The operator is in that machine blading continuously in that territory. It's our most heavily trafficked gravel road area.
Is that Dallas included?
Yes.
Okay.
We felt that the money was better spent on putting the operator in a more comfortable cab and controls with his continual...
So that was a two-wheel or a four-wheel?
Well, it's six-by-four, so it's just rear-wheel drive. All four tires in the rear would be driving the front or the steer axle. We've been buying all-wheel drives. The cost difference between the machine with the electronic controls, the joysticks, and the all-wheel drive machines, they're roughly equal from what we've seen with the market survey we did. I guess we'll see the proofs in the pudding in the prices where they, where they come out. But the all-wheel drive and the electronic controls are roughly the same price. We made a choice in this case between the two. And they're within $1,000 of each other, so... This is the Caterpillar quote. The first one is for the six-by-four motor grader. We're trading number 217. Net bid is 336,972. Trade-in value on the current number 217, 60,000. Net bid with trade-in, 276,972. We also asked for a quotation on a one-way snowplow for front mount on motor graders. We may or may not take advantage of that. Zeigler bid, 16,485. On the 140 all-wheel drive machine is the trade-in for unit number 411. Net bid was 337,452. Trade-in value on the current 772D, number 411, was 56,500. Net bid with trade-in, 280,952. And again, the bid on the one-way snowplow is 16,485. On the all-wheel drive machine, net bid without trade, 338,175. Trade-in on unit number 411, 57,000. Net bid with trade-in, 281,175. One-way snowplow bid each, 11,455. On the six-by-four machine, bid for the machine, 323,125. Trade-in, 51,000 on unit 217. Net bid with trade-in, 272,125. Again, 11,455 on the plow. Recommend the board receive the bids and allow the county engineer to examine them and make a recommendation on a way.
So move.
Second. Motion by Monson, I'm not sure who seconded it. Radig? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O say nay. Pass is five to zero.
Pricey little dudes. Never seen them come so close. No.
Reports on committee meetings.
I had one this morning.
The water and soil conservation group, pretty active group. They're working, they try to keep up on all those watersheds and keep them clear. They did pick a farmer of the year, which will be submitted to the state for competition, and I can't tell you who it is, because nobody knows yet. They had a tree sale. They sold 835 trees. That's it.
Mr. Wright, Mr. Rung? Anything that I'm going to talk about will come under board concerns, but round two of citizen concerns.
Michelle Scaff, deputy auditor. I just wanted to let you know the AP automation, which is something you approved a few months ago, is going to go live next Wednesday. So the claims that you approve next Tuesday will be paid through the AP automation process, which is our third-party vendor that's associated with InCode. We'll be sending them a file, and they've given the vendors option for electronic funds transfer payments or bank cards, and the default is a check. So we'll still be paying a few claims manually through our office, and those are ones that we have to stick flyers or different things in with the check. But this should really streamline our process, and we're looking forward to next week and seeing how it rolls out.
It also is much more secure, right?
Yes, it is. And yes, and all of the, we're indemnified, so if there's any fraudulent activity, Envoice Pay will handle that.
Not that we have that.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other citizen concerns? Board concerns?
My enterprise is the same as yours, if you get the same phone call.
Standby.
You, too?
What do you got, Mr. Radig, and then we'll know.
I had a discussion on whether or not a cemetery over in a certain township was going to get mowed, because
I've got a lot more information on that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Rung, did you get the same phone call?
Yes, but I had something else.
Okay.
Rural Town Hall meetings. I was hoping we could make a plan to start doing those this year. Maybe start out somewhere on the other side, Highway 20, like Craxtonville. So just put that bug in your ear.
Okay. All right. Mr. Radig mentioned that we have an issue where our two Grant Township cemeteries are not being mowed. I'm not sure where to dig into this, but Mr. Gill is well acquainted, and I think Mr. Woodman knows a little bit, too. We have a lady named Jean Lily is the clerk of Grant Township. We have had, in the last couple of weeks or thereabouts, all of the trustees have resigned due to apparently some disagreements on how things should be run. Butler and I sat there this afternoon and made a couple of phone calls. One, no money has been spent from the clerk's account. No money has been distributed. I guess that we have fire departments and such that need to be funded, and they have not been. Nor was there a budget submitted by the clerk on, on time, and I don't remember. Was that the same time as our regular March 15th or thereabouts?
Yeah, same time.
Same time for us, so no budget has been submitted. Again, as Mr. Radig said, there's been no mowing at the two cemeteries, which I guess are fairly active, and the school grounds. Security Bank is the holder of the funds for the Grant Township. Security Bank does not have Jean Lily listed as clerk on the, on the records of finances. And as I understand it, Iowa Code submits that the county is required to take over this, this township and make sure that these issues are resolved and paid and taken care of. Do you have anything more that you'd like to contribute, Mr. Woodman?
This probably should come back as an agenda item rather than further deliberation.
Mr. Woodman and I will be talking on another topic tomorrow. Would, could we continue this conversation perhaps on that and a plan of action?
That'd be fine.
Do you have any input, Mr. Gill?
No.
Do you have some and you just don't want to say it, or?
I think it's more proper that all the advice of the attorney and put it on the agenda.
Mr. Butler?
There's also two former trustees. They're on that signature card, and they have since resigned, so actually there's nobody can write a check on that account.
What trustees, sorry?
Michelle.
No, I didn't hear the former trustees. Is that what you said?
Pat McGuire and Michelle Grant. Or Michelle, Michelle Kettleson. I'm sorry.
So actually on the account, nobody can sign on it, so it's a
Because the clerk has to, the clerk has to fund it, but the trustees have to approve the check being distributed. Well, in a nutshell, we've got kind of a situation down there that needs to be looked at and taken care of directly, so obviously, that's a board concern, and I will be chatting with Mr. Woodman tomorrow morning on another topic anyway, so. Pass that. Do we, by the way, do we have anybody on the phone?
No.
Okay.
Do we have a way to maybe address the mowing by have Kenny's staff being escorted potentially by the sheriff's department to actually get to one mowed?
I don't know, and I did chat with the guy, and you probably did. Did you talk to Mr. Welty?
Not him.
Okay, and I talked with the gentleman that has been mowing. I would like to, and Memorial Day is fast upon us, and he would like to he really actually wants to mow it, but he's not going to do it for nothing, and I don't blame him. So I, I think that this will be part of the conversation with Mr. Woodman tomorrow, that we'll try and figure out some way, hopefully in a, in an emergency situation, we can maybe get something going. I, and I, when talking with Mr. Welty a little bit ago, he said that it is so tall that he'd have to mow it twice, once high and once low, to get it, to get it to where it would look halfway normal and right, I guess, so. I don't want to have people coming back to visiting deceased loved ones in cemeteries and, and have this board be ashamed of the way the cemeteries look. And I guess we're just going to have to address this, take the bull by the horns, and do something sooner than later. So I will be, again, I'll be talking to Mr. Woodman tomorrow and planning some course of action, hopefully next week. As an aside, the Iowa Legislature has decided to look into taking over mental health again. And having what I think is one of the most successful, efficient regions in the state. Now we're looking at disbanding. I guess the DHS has a final final sentence in their, in their language that says they can dissolve any, any region, probably for just about any cause, but I don't think the ink is dry, or nor are they completely sure what they're going to do. I think you guys got the email, too, didn't you, Matthew?
I think so.
I don't know. I, I think it's a fluid situation, and I, I just don't know that we can commit, other than to say I'm pretty glad we didn't buy the Crisis Center up there on Division Street, because should the, should the regions dissolve, we, I don't know who would be actually holding title to something and an entity and a piece of real estate that doesn't exist in a, in a government fashion anymore, so. I, I, looks to me like we're going to have our hands full again with the legislature and can hardly wait for the, with the new.
Never an old moment.
Thanks, Des Moines, but. Anybody else?
Anything you want to say about this?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that is all part of our
On the COVID, we have applied for the funds. I did ID.me, which identifies me as the recipient for the county, to get the money here. Approximately four days after we made the application on May 12th, which today would be the fourth day approximately, I received no calls, nothing, no emails, questioning anything, so supposed to hopefully get the money, I would assume sometime this week. We have a separate fund set up to put in, so it can totally be tracked. The key question is, what can we spend it on? This is totally up in the air right now, because all the guidelines have been coming out. NACO did sound out a 23-page, pretty good PowerPoint. So now the question, I talked to Joshua, because this money is coming to the county, the authority really doesn't control it at all. It's the county board of super, it controls this money. So we are going to have to have probably legal opinions, what we can spend this on, protect myself and the board of supervisors before we spend this money on anything. I talked to Joshua, see how full their platter is up there. We do have, at the moment, we had Jason Kaminsky and Marie Bronwell from Allers Firm looking into this. They've read through the 151 pages. And it's in fine print, so they have read through this. The question, and Joshua's checking with PJ, and Joshua can come right in and interrupt me here anytime, more than welcome to. See, if they really want to handle it, or Allers Firm is willing to do it, the two people we got working with authority to see where we can spend this and give us opinion, hopefully, where we can spend it and how. To do that, they'd have to sign a letter of conflict, you know, so there's a conflict between authority and the board of supervisors. I'm sure authority, and I would assume the board would welcome this if we want to use the county attorney if we can, if they feel, you know, should, or they can assist us in this. But we need an opinion, legal opinion, before we spend a dime, because if we spend it where we don't or can't use it, we have to repay this money. And I sure wouldn't want to go down the road and have a million here or two million here or three million there. We have to come back and pay back. So we want all of our bases covered, but they've made this COVID so defined, when you really get into the grid of this bill, that it's going to be hard spending the 10 million and the, unless 10 million, unless we can help with a jail facility or other facilities, such as possibly courthouse or other agencies, whatever. But we want to make sure when we spend a dollar, we don't have to pay this dollar back. So the deal is Joshua and PJ, we're going to talk, if you have yet, Joshua, but would there, would they, we use the expertise of the other firm here to assist the county board in getting a legal opinion. To do that, they'd have to have a letter signed like we did with the city when they, Allers was helping authority, because they were helping the city also. Saying there's no, we don't, we won't consume a conflict. That's kind of where we're at. Do you have anything to add, Joshua?
PJ and I haven't had a chance to discuss yet what our role will be. It's pretty highly specialized, so I would say it's likely that we would recommend using outside counsel. We do need a definitive opinion on how to use the money. Sometimes there's a desire with outside counsel to have so many disclaimers and references to there not being any decided case law, that the opinion isn't really worth a whole lot. So we would need to nail them down on exactly what they are going to be able to tell us. But like Dennis says, we need that clarity before we spend the money.
And that being said, I suggested, Joshua, we have a conference call with Allers Firm, with our county attorney, get the details of this agreement somewhat defined, just like you're saying. We don't want disclaimers. We want to know what can we spend this money for, before we spend it.
And rather than know with 100% certainty that we can spend on, say, 100 categories, I'd be interested to know what the greatest, you know, assurance, what we could spend the money on, first, second, third things that are
Absolutely.
Oh, and speaking of people on accounts that aren't on accounts, are you the sole signer of this $10 million now, or?
Everything has to go through the board's super. I cannot sit there and sit there writing checks out. All I do is act as an agent and get the money here. It's all in return by the board how we spend this. I wouldn't want to touch it.
I'm just wondering, because the ID.me is through you, right?
Yeah, actually, they scan your face.
Okay, well, they don't know what any of us look like, so if you stay home, I'm just making sure that, you know.
And ain't any of us going to say, "I'm Dennis Butler."
Yeah.
They got my picture and my verse, we're taking about 15 other IDs.
You're kind of a big deal now, aren't you, Dennis?
No. I just want to get the money here, so the board has the opportunity to spend it.
So in a hindsight committee fashion, we need to approve that as a board applying for that money? I mean, I get that it was sent out to like every community, but essentially, we do have to apply for it in a way. So as like a hindsight thought, then we have to like prove
You have to go through a transmission portal, that stuff. It took hell and I about three hours to get this done in two days.
They're saying as a board.
I, I agree with that. I think next week, maybe we ought to have a item that is a motion to approve Dennis to apply for the money with the assistance of Allers, if you get there in a week. With board approval, though.
And then probably making him the designate to
That's fine. Just kind of after the fact, probably should do, yes, I agree with that.
Yeah.
As a hindsight committee.
Now, it has been recommended, I did get an email from our district health director. There's been one suggestion that they form a committee to kind of go through it. I don't know who's on the committee. I assume the board, maybe any other people. He'd like be on that committee, say how we should spend this money. I don't know if the board wants to create a committee like that. Right now, we're kind of dedicating really the money to public safety for the construction.
Well, don't we need to figure out what we can and can't spend it on first?
Absolutely.
Yeah, then let's, let's
I already got requests.
I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse. Let's, let's figure out where we can spend it and then act accordingly, would be my suggestion, but.
And we'll have an agenda item to approve that motion next week.
I, I, I understand Kevin's request, but if he gets on, there's probably 10 others who'd like to be on that committee.
Right.
So then that won't work.
Well, let's
Let's get there first.
We're going to have a lot of departments there with their
You already cooped lost revenues, which I feel there's probably several hundred thousand we cooped. Once we get the money, it's the total decision of the board where that money can go.
Well, then I don't see a need to form a committee.
No.
We already are a committee.
Yeah.
I agree.
And we did discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? For the good of the cause and adjourn this meeting.
Very good.
We are done.